All right, welcome to our regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Perry. Let's call our meeting to order and have roll call.
Coffee.
Here.
Bluntso.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Calderon.
Here.
Rupp.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Coram.
Here. All right, we've got Coram. And to Meredith's disbelief, we'll ask Bryce to offer our invocation tonight.
Thank you, Meredith. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this holiday season. We thank you for the Thanksgiving that we all enjoyed with our friends and our family. The time to get together and to be thankful for those things that you have bestowed upon us. Now, as we enter this Christmas season, let us always be grateful. Let us always be given to others, for as we know, it's better to give than it is to receive. And bless this council as they meet today. There are important things on the agenda. There are things that they need to consider. Let them consider them thoughtfully. But let them do the work that needs to be done. We will give you the praise and honor and glory in Christ's name, amen.
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 Thank you, Bryce. Meredith, do you approve?
I think we're all alive, so.
Okay.
Very good.
All right.
Let's go and get started with item number one, our consent agenda.
Motion to approve our consent agenda.
All right, motion and second.
And coffee.
Yes.
Bluntso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Calderon.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown. Coram.
Yes. All right, item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to items on the city agenda. None? All right. We'll continue on to item five, proclamations, commendations, reports, inquiries by the governing body. So we'll start off by council reports. Ward one, Scott.
I don't have anything.
Any thoughts? Cory?
Well, I think the square looks really pretty and lit up, and I just think it's beautiful. Should be something we have a time to come and look at.
Yeah.
And I don't really have anything else.
All right.
But I do want to say I really like the city bites. It's just so informative, and I think it's such a good way to be vulnerable before the city and let them know what's going on.
Excellent, thank you, Gloria. Joe?
I don't have anything at the top.
Austin?
I don't have anything.
All right, not until it's about your big buck.
No.
Randy?
No.
Derek? And Sammy?
I mean, I just had a few people reach out about the rates, of course. Some would like the electricity to be lowered, as we've mentioned. So that's pretty much it.
All right, something to consider, and we'll discuss that more in this meeting a little bit later. All right, moving right along. So we have a presentation from our CEO from Stillwater Medical. So Courtney, it's all you.
Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, I am Courtney Cuskeasty. I currently serve as CFO of the Stillwater Medical Campus here in Perry. Lived here most of my life and have served at this campus since 2008, so it's very near and dear to my heart. To give you kind of an update on financials, of course, we don't have November final closed, as it's the first business day of the month, but we closed October with a positive bottom line of $24,663. If we stay on this course, we'll have a projected bottom line of a positive around $185,000. So this is great news considering we had a loss of half a million dollars last year. To go over some other information for you guys and the citizens, I've had lots of comments about using a contract company for providers in the ED. And just to give some background on this, several years ago, before Stillwater came on, when Dr. Connect retired, that left two local physicians. And so being unreasonable to ask two local physicians to provide 24/7 coverage for the ED as well wouldn't provide them with much of a home work-life balance. So that's when we decided to go this route. And I will say, the local medical staff does review the credentials of all the providers we do bring in, and they sign off on them before they're even allowed to start working. And if we do have issues, we do ask that contract company not to send that provider back, which we have on occasion, be it for care issues or even just attitude issues. We've asked them not to send them back. Also, some concerns in the community I know have been brought up with utility rate increase about what about the financial need of the lower income or fixed income population? So I just wanted to bring to your guys' attention and the citizens' attention of a program we offer at the hospital, our charity care program. This is an income-based program. You do have to apply for it, and it's tiered, so you can either get a discount or free care depending on your need. And it's tiered based off the federal poverty guidelines. So if you need any information on that, please contact the central business office, and they'll get you an application and point you in the right direction. But to let you know, for this community, we've written off close to $750,000 just in charity care for this community. I will also note that it's one application for the whole system, so you do one application, and it applies here, main campus, Blackwell campus, and any Stillwater-owned clinic for physicians. Patient satisfaction, we do do patient satisfactions. We welcome and want feedback because we want to provide the best care and patient experience for our patients. So you will note when you come in, we have a new little QR code survey that you can take even for your outpatient. So let's say you come in for a CT, you can scan that QR code, let us know how we did and how we might be able to improve. Also, for centers, for Medicare and Medicaid, we can only count top box scores on those surveys. So that means I can only count if you rate us a nine or a 10. And I will say, this whole year, our patient satisfaction scores have not dropped below an 82, with this last quarter being an 88. Also want to note that the nationwide benchmark for that from the survey company that provides these surveys nationally is 82.7, so top box scores. Services that we offer, of course, we have full-service ED, observation stays within average of about 24 hours for the year. We have outpatient infusion services. We can do most drugs other than chemo drugs, just because we're not set up to mix those chemo drugs. We have outpatient radiology services, which include CT, ultrasound, of course, x-ray, bone density, and 2D mammography. We offer outpatient laboratory services, outpatient physical therapy services. We have outpatient cardiac and pulmonary rehab services, and we have a specialty clinic where a cardiologist and a general surgeon rotate through. The general surgeon, of course, while she doesn't do surgery here, she will see you for pre and post-op visits. Construction update, this is very exciting. We're happy to be moving right along with this. Abatement in the crawl space in the basement has been completed, was completed right before Thanksgiving. Demolition in the old surgery wing has started, and that wing will become the new observation and infusion wing. That demo lasts the rest of this week, and then we will have the abatement people back out so they can abate the flooring in that wing, and we can continue that, which is our phase one. So that's what I have. Any questions?
I don't know that I've got a question, Courtney, but you kind of went through the list of things that are available at the hospital. The sense or the feel in the community is that there's not very many services left. And I don't know in a town this size how you do it, but there's, I feel like the hospital's got to come up with some way of advertising or communicating better what that is.
What the services are.
I mean, more and more people just tell me, well, I just loaded up and went to Stillwater, or I loaded up and went to Pocahontas because I didn't think that was still available in Perry.
Yeah, all of our services are still intact aside from the inpatient stays. So we will do better about advertising when people know what we do.
I know it's tough in a town this size.
Could we put something in the city bites about it?
Oh, yeah.
We did, in fact, I think in the last one, didn't you work with Kyla, the someone out on the city bites or the newsletter?
Yeah, we've had one before, but never hit split up back.
I just think it's a constant battle we're going to need to fight and keep it out in front of people's minds.
Absolutely.
Or eventually, if we put that on our website of like amenities within the city, and you have the hospital listed there, you can have a list of the services that are provided.
Yeah.
And of course, Angela was always on our website as well.
Right.
Are those, all those services available, I'm assuming five days or seven days a week?
Mostly five days a week.
And just.
The ED would be the only thing offered, 7 days, 24/7.
And those are normal business hours, I'm assuming?
Infusion is the one that can probably go outside of those hours. We have done infusion overnight because it's the floor nurse that does those infusions. So those could probably be scheduled more than five days a week.
Thank you for answering some of the town hall questions.
You're welcome.
Yes, helpful.
Any other questions? She's been here a lot lately. That's okay, I'll come as many times as I need to.
Perfect, well, thank you, Courtney.
You're welcome.
All right, so moving on to item number six, our city manager report.
I don't have anything major to report on aside from something we'll talk about a little bit later on, which is the sewer man extension on 32nd Street. So I'll just, I'll leave that to that item. Anything else major, I don't really have any updates on, so.
Okay. All right, item number seven, CFO remarks.
So we spent some time on rates. Hopefully, we can come to an conclusion tonight, hopefully. Debt service coverage calculations related to our bank first debt, and those went out, so we spent a little time getting that tied up. It's based upon audited numbers. Our normal monthly work as far as reconciling and reviewing, and that's about all that's happened this month. All that's happened, it's still a lot.
All right, thank you, Meredith. Any questions for Meredith? All right, item number eight, presentation of city attorney report.
If you looked at the top of it, I changed September, but I didn't change September. So if you want to cross out September at the top and put November, then the report will be more accurate. I want to point out the major things that, and they're quite frankly, they're recent. In the first paragraph, I had a call with ODOT engineer Jake Gilbert today, and also had a call, scheduled call with ASIF and his engineer on the project that they have there. And they are wanting all of our contacts. So I gave them Nate and Brian and Paul and me and, you know, all the contacts, phone numbers, emails. And also got him set up with Jake Gilbert because they're going to talk about the road. And this is their engineer, and he is preparing that project. They're going to start with making sure that the turns are correct and the improvement to the road is correct before they tackle a whole lot more of the project to make sure that they have an agreement with ODOT. So, I mean, I think that's fabulous news, that's moving forward. Not just clean up the property, but the project they've discussed is moving forward. So today, I also prepared the historic preservation agenda. Melanie has done her second draft of the guidelines. That's what we've been waiting for. Because when we do our mailer out to the public, we need to tell them what are the guidelines that they're going to be under. We need to give them a copy of the ordinance and a copy of the guidelines. When they come to the meeting, they are adequately prepared. So at the meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission, I just put down would be two weeks from today, they can schedule when they want, that's when I'll be back, at noon. We would ask them, if appropriate, to approve the guidelines and to approve the district. Now, I know that originally, you know, we've done this Perry family-friendly district, and that is what we've talked about being the potential guidelines. We need to have some district set that we send this mailer out to, because we've got to send it individually to everyone that lives there and publish it in the newspaper. Of course, the whole purpose of the hearing is to determine what the district is, but if that's potentially the district or something smaller than that will end up being the district, at least we'll notify everyone that's properly notified. I'm talking about at that hearing, that public hearing, and this is, of course, up to you, but make it a combined public hearing. Have the city, have that be a city council meeting and a planning commission meeting, because of course, they approve district regulations. This is a district regulation, even though the Historic Preservation Commission is going to recommend it to us. They should, of course, have something to say about it too, like to get a recommendation from them to always check all the boxes. And then if the council wanted to be there, you know, they could hear directly from the public, you know, what their thoughts might be. I thought that that might work, but of course, it's all up to you. That's what I proposed. I also prepared the PUD notice and the PUD ordinance, that's Plan Unit Development. That will be on the, on the planning commission's agenda for their next meeting. Finally, the E91 agreement was approved by the Attorney General. And so that is final, as soon as it's filed. And we've talked about filing that with the county clerk tomorrow. And one of the first things that we need to do as soon as that is approved is to get the bylaw amendments approved. Remember, that was a crucial part of that agreement. And so I prepared that bylaw amendment document today and have sent that forward for, this would be the bylaw amendment that needs to be adopted by the E911 board. At that point, we're all square on all that with it properly filed, since the AG has approved it. And I'd say those are the high points of kind of what we've been doing this month. Are there any questions?
Excited to hear that we've got the E91 deal very near completion.
All right, no other questions for Bryce?
There was a mention that Bryce had the documents for the CCC lake house lease. Are we leasing that to a caretaker or individual?
We're talking about potentially renting that out to someone in the community so that we're making money on it and not just seeing it deteriorate by not being taken better.
So this is just legwork to prepare for that?
Yeah.
Okay, no other questions? Let's go on to item number nine. Consider approval of resolution number 2024-14 of the City Council of the City of Perry, Oklahoma notifying the Secretary of the Noble County Election Board that there will be a nonpartisan general municipal election for the election of certain elected officials on Tuesday, April 1st, 2025, providing for the dates for the filing period for such nonpartisan general municipal election, the offices to be filled at such nonpartisan general municipal election qualifications for office and issuing the election proclamation.
Well, this is the election proclamation. I hope that everyone here remembers the comments of O'Mag and David Weatherford and Bill Tackett, you know, about stability, and it's important, if possible, to have a stable council. So if some of you would like to rerun, that, of course, you know, stability goes with having a stable community. I think that was clear in that, in that presentation. But as you can see, we have four one-year, four-four-year terms that are up, and then a one-two term. So the filing time for that is that first week in February, and the election will be on April 1st.
I agree with the stability thing, but I don't think I'll be rerunning because I'll be 83-year-old, but then in four more years, I'll be close to 90. So I think to get a younger, stable person in that is agreeable to work with this council will be a wise thing. But I hope that whoever fills this position will be somebody that really loves and cares about the community and is not just running from some crazy deal. But I thought by putting that out here now, maybe people would be thinking about it. And that, it's not that I wouldn't want to that because I love this council. It's been one of the greatest councils I've seen working in my 30 or 40 years of coming and watching. So I think they're doing a great job, and, but I don't tend to agree. God would have slapped me in the face to.
Don't say that, too, Gloria.
Well, I was speaking of you, Gloria, when I made those remarks.
Well, thank you, Gloria. And yeah, so with that, we'll have the seats that are coming up or the seats that are on this half of the table, and then Austin's seat, since you were appointed to fill Curtis' finish out his term.
Motion to approve resolution 2024-14.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second for that. Any other discussion? Go. All right.
Coffee.
Yes.
Bluntso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Calderon.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Coram.
Yes. All right, item 10, consider changes in utility rates as follows. We will start with item A, which is introductory remarks by Nate Reed, city manager, and then we'll tackle each one of these following your presentation.
Sounds good. So the first thing I want to say is, I've really appreciated this process of seeing democracy play out where, you know, the council saw that the residents had a lot of comments and thoughts on these rate adjustments. So they allowed for town hall meetings, and it's been great to hear everybody's take on the different things. And I think, just based on hearing council talk, that we've heard residents and that we plan to implement something that's maybe a little bit more conservative and over the course of, you know, breaking down the rate increases over time. To that effect, I asked for us to make a document that would allow us to look ahead and say, okay, if we broke this out over three years, and we did, you know, X amount per year in terms of percentages, how much money would that give us? How much would that put on residents' average bill, things like that? And so rather than me coming with a recommendation tonight, which is, I think, what we kind of tried in the past, I wanted to kind of pitch this to council, show, you know, this document, and kind of just look at some numbers together and talk about, well, what if we did this, what if we did that, and see kind of what that would be too. So, yeah, with that control room, if you would share my screen.
Sounds pretty visual. That's an awesome document.
Yeah, it's really cool, so.
Very colorful. Why do you have to say Houston, we have a problem?
I just heard the controller and say, uh.
Awesome.
So that's only slightly better.
Right, it's pretty small. So I did share this with the council before this meeting, so I hope that each of you had an opportunity to kind of play with this and see what different percentages will look like over the course of three years. So let me kind of break this down a little bit, and I'll zoom in as much as I can while still preserving what we need. So really, we have a couple of different ways to get money that we talked about, water being one of those, sewer being one of those, electric being one, and then admin fees were discussed as well as things to adjust. And before, before I really jump into this, this project, I just wanted to remind council that I know that it's been really hard not to get zoomed in on the water projects because those are such a big deal and they're so important. But just as a reminder, this was never about the water projects, right? This was always about us not keeping up with inflation since 2008. Those water projects are ancillary. They've just come because we didn't keep up with inflation. And now we're saying, oh, we need all this money to do these projects. But ultimately, it's not just about the water projects. If it were just about the water projects, well, we could do a debt service payment of $275,000 and knock out two of those projects. But that's, that's not what the key issue is here. That's important, but it's only a piece. So with that being said, let me show you what this looks like. So we have three ways we can adjust the water. If we do percentages here, so say if you did in year one, like a 35% increase, well, that gives us an additional $354,000. If you did a commercial increase of 50%, 121, and then 50% on the industrial side, almost $40,000, leading to your total increase of 515 for the water side. Now, this number up here is adding not only the water side, but it's adding the sewer, the electric, which we talked, we've talked and kind of gone back on, back and forth on, well, do we decrease the base fee for residential and increase the industrial side? It sounded to me like the vast majority of people have said, hey, just leave the electric alone, which I'm okay with. I'm okay with, you know, whatever you guys want to do, this isn't for me to make a recommendation. But my thought process was, just from hearing what everybody said, hey, well, if we leave the residential side of electric alone, currently, the industrial side of electric is, has a lower rate per kilowatt hour than the residential side. And so if we increase that by a 4.62%, which would bring it a little bit closer to the residents are paying for electricity, that would give us $100,000 and could then cut back, you know, some of these other rate increases. So that's a number we can play with if we want to as well. And then the admin fee, we've, we talked about raising it $2. That's in line with. That's in line with what other cities are, are paying right now. So we can play with these numbers here and kind of see what we get.
So, um, we ask questions now?
Absolutely.
So today, the industrial rate is lower than the residential?
Per kilowatt hour, yeah.
Sorry, on electric?
Yeah.
And with, with the number that you've got in the spreadsheet right now, that would raise it some, but it still wouldn't equalize it?
No, it gets us pretty close though. Yeah, it's, they're structured a little bit differently, so it's not as simple as just saying, oh, we're gonna, you'd have to restructure them to get an exact increase to match, but it does, it gets us at least closer looking at that industrial rate moving at 4.63%.
I mean, I have no experience in this, in this field, but is there some value in, in having an industrial rate that is lower? And I think about buying a semi fuel is, you can save it more than just what you buy if you fill your tank once. I guess I'm asking because I have no idea what the answer is. What are your thoughts there?
Yeah, my thoughts there is it kind of depends on council philosophy. If you're really wanting to, to invite a business, a large industrial-type business to come into Perry, keeping your rates lower is probably a good, good approach. Other hand, you can always lower it for economic development later on, although that has to be done in a really specific way. You can't just make a deal with a specific business, but.
So you couldn't do a one-off for some new industry?
No, well, the way you'd do it is you would say, hey, anyone who moves into Perry and uses X number of kilowatt hours or more will qualify for this new rate is the only way of doing that. And correct me if I'm wrong, Bryce.
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah.
So if our, if our normal rates were very close, we would have a mechanism to encourage new entry?
Correct, yes. Yeah, and the way I see it, this is my personal philosophy and I, I can see it the other way too, but the way I see it is it's a rates, lowering rates for industrial is a great tool to invite industries in. Once they're in and established, the way I see it is they should be paying low residence.
Typically with those new industries or new companies, new businesses coming in, you would do that discount for X amount of time and then it would go up. It's not something that, hey, use this much and then you always get this discount.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Is this typically?
Right, it's just, right.
Is it typically done with utility rates or I thought there were tax incentives or something like that that's typically?
A lot of states outside of Oklahoma will do property tax. So they'll say, hey, we'll take your property tax and sometimes your sales tax and we'll give it back to you for site improvements or underbuilding or, you know, whatever they do, but we don't have that tool, so utility rates is, is not uncommon, I would say.
We do have a sales tax tool.
We do, yeah. Yeah, so I, I mean, I guess one thing that I would say is just looking at some numbers for the water projects, the debt service, for staffing and some of those, for some of those projects and then for other capital improvements, I'm looking at, you know, close to $975,000 for year one is what I would really love to see.
That's your target.
Yeah.
Would that, that would, that amount, these increases that you have on here gets us to where we can start on projects? This isn't saying like, hey, after, we're not gonna be able to start on projects until, until after three years. This is, this is putting us in a place that we can get started in year one?
That's correct, yeah. This would put us in a place to get started in year one, particularly on those water projects, but I mean, I'm asking for an additional $350,000 roughly in other capital projects, equipment, so we could get started on some other pressing projects as well.
Right.
Timing of collection, though, right, depending upon implementation?
Yes.
So like, water is used more in the summer and things like that, so we wouldn't fully see this increase in the next six months. It's gonna take a year of this as that money is.
But we could, we could incur down on it, right?
Sure, sure, but just as far as, there's not going to be cash in $924,000 of cash sitting in the bank.
So Nate, was that an annual number that you're looking for or is that what you really want to raise in the few months we've got left in this year?
So what I would like to raise, no, I would like to, so yeah, that's a really good question. What I'd like to do is do a January 1 implementation for year one. Year two would be a January 1 implementation for 2026. Year three, a January 1 implementation for 2027. That's what I slated out here.
So that's going on a calendar year, not our fiscal year?
Correct, yeah, that's correct. And obviously, we could do it faster than that. We could do it slower than that. I mean, I'm, I'm open. It's, it's your guys' call. There's obviously consequences for doing one or the other. We look, we've looked at this graph a lot and I think it's important, but the, the piece of, you know, these increases isn't to make up for all this money, this $15 million that we've not collected over the years and we've absorbed. But it's to, to get us back on track with this line, right? We're not gonna get this money back and the longer it takes to implement, you know, these rate increases, the more money we lose out on, we absorb. The more costs we absorb, I should say. So that's, that's a consequence of pushing this back. And that being said, I think it's important, and we've seen this, to balance with resident needs, right? So doing a 35% increase in year one is, you know, a little bit, it's about half of what we were looking at doing initially. So, you know, going from maybe a $55 average to a, you know, $30 average or so.
So these numbers are having the rate increase implemented January 1 for over the next three years?
Correct, yeah.
Every January 1 is when those increases would happen?
Yep, yep. And so if you look here, the year one, 35% increase on the residential side, 50% increase on the commercial side, 50% on the industrial side, year two, 20% across the board, and then in year three, 15% for the residential and 20% on the commercial and industrial. That's what these numbers are slated out to do right now. The nice thing about this is you can change it. You know, if we change it to 15%, then it adjusts, you know, our number. Which, so if any of you have ideas like, oh, can we look at this? And we have to type.
Just, we talked to, in the town halls, we talked to a whole lot of different percentages and stuff and just for everybody watching and things, those percentages that you, you were just talking about would be equal to the 69 and the 80, 89 that we've talked about previously, is that correct?
Yeah, so these ones that I'm just talking about, yeah, it would get pretty close to that. If you look, this is a 70% increase over time.
I don't mean to like equal that. I just meant apples for apples. We're talking, talking about the same.
Same numbers.
Because we also talked about 14%. Also, you know, there are so many different percentages out there that I wanted to be.
Yeah, so, and this, so this kind of helps understand. I understand that somebody who, somebody who hasn't looked at this as long as, you know, we have is probably so confused. And I'm happy to answer any questions. But so year one, rather than being a 14% increase overall, this would be about a 9% increase overall. And then year two, we would hit that 14.68%. Year three, rather than stopping at the 14, we'd go up to the 20. And the thought process there is, again, because you're implementing over time, you're losing some money, therefore you're having to raise it a little bit more to make up for that, that lost revenue.
Assuming that inflation is still growing over the next three years?
Yeah, yeah. Well, and this is, I mean, this isn't even considering inflation. This is just, this is just a time value of money question.
Does this figure with the electric either staying the same or is this with increasing or decreasing it?
Yeah, so this would be with a no, not touching the residential base fee for electric, but increasing the industrial electric rate by 4.62%.
So before we get too far off of that, what, that industrial tier, what percentage are they of the whole currently?
In terms of the revenues made? Third question.
Where I was thinking.
Yes. Did you do that?
You say you don't know numbers.
He's at the implication, he's getting.
Are those percent increases looking at the original number or is that 15% increase over the already 35 or is that 15?
Sorry, I'm not following. Explain it in a different way.
So like 15, so it'd be 35% increase first time, then another 15.
On top of that, yes. But no, you've already, you've already had the 35% increase, which you've paid for a year. And then whatever you're paying then would be a 15% increase on top of that.
So when we're all said and done?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be 69% or 80%.
Yeah, you're 70, yeah. So over the three years, you're still hitting that 69% or in this case, 70, but, and 90.
But we're allowing all of us to ease into it instead of eating the whole element in one year. And I'm hesitant to ask this Nate, because I know you guys have thought that longer and harder than us, but the, the example you showed us just now, the, the industrial and the commercial rates were going up more than the residential.
Yeah.
Is that because we felt they were further behind or?
Yeah, the thought process.
They're more capable of eating that kind of increase or?
Yeah, so the thought process on that is, as I talked to, to council and really, it seemed like the town halls kind of came to this consensus, but most, the vast majority of businesses can pass those costs on and oftentimes to non-residents. The more we can put these revenues on the backs of non-Perry residents, to me, that's a big win. I think it is to you guys as well. And so that's the thought process there. And I realize that that doesn't apply to every single business, right? There are some businesses that are franchised and they're like, no, your prices are set, you know, you can't change that. And I get that, but the vast majority of businesses in town can and will pass this on and some of that pass on will go to non-residents. So that's the only reason that those are different numbers and that they were different from the get-go, right? 89 versus 69, yeah.
Oh, we kind of touched on it just a second ago about inflation. How do we account for inflation in this? Do, is it written in there that, you know, when we pass the budget or whatever we're supposed to, Wade was in the past, we, like for electric, we have the option to raise the electric, the amount of inflation? Is that in here at all where, yes, we're automatically gonna raise it this percent, this percent, this percent over the next three years? But what if, you know, we raise it this percent plus inflation or we just raise it that percent?
So 10 years from now, we don't end up in the same boat we're in.
Right, how do we account for that?
Yeah, really good question. So our current ordinance allows annually to say, hey, inflation was 4%, 5%, whatever percent it was last year. Therefore, we're gonna raise our rates by X percent. And in the past, it seems like, just based on, you know, the numbers we're dealing with right now, the councils have not done that. So I would recommend, this doesn't take into account inflation at all. I'd recommend that you continue to do that every year and you just.
So this doesn't overwrite what we already have on the book?
Correct, yeah. This just corrects the course we're going. It doesn't make up for the past, but it corrects that course.
Actually, actually, the amendment that we passed, the CPI ordinance provides that you apply the CPI unless, unless the budget doesn't have it in it. And if the budget doesn't have it in it, then you follow what the budget has. So you omit determination of budget time. If that, if that number is not reflected in your budget, then you're not applying the CPI. Prior to that time, you're supposed to apply it, but the council didn't want to, so we had to correct that.
So what would happen is January 1, we would have these increases and then the CPI increases would be July 1. So they're spread out over the year instead of all at once.
And you know that that CPI has.
It's going down.
It is going down now and I kind of expect that it will continue to do that. But it's fluctuated, right? It's been as, it's been super high. It's, it's been as low as half a percent. So that's kind of depending upon what happens.
When that CPI ordinance got put in place, average was less than 3, I think.
Exactly.
The first year it was put in place, the first calendar year after that, it was like 12% and scared everybody.
Exactly.
I, I can't remember, but it was.
It does vary, yeah. And, and what we used to always use is, you know, is kind of the benchmark for budget is someplace between that 3 and 5% is, you know, until it started having some of those larger swings.
I have an anonymous question from somebody that just texted me. What happens if ditch which is to go direct to OMPA? Do we risk losing as our primary industrial customer?
Yeah, so my understanding is we provide electric, it's our area. They can't, no residential, commercial or industrial can say, I'm gonna stop using your electricity and go with CREC or any others. We would actually have to waive that right, which we wouldn't do. Is that correct, Bryce?
That's correct.
That brings me to another question. Do, is that the same with water? Can they just ask somebody like, like if they live on the edge of town, that can they just do rural water?
I don't know on that one. What is that?
It works one way, it doesn't work the other. You know, we have to give permission from rural water association to connect somebody up out there. They, there has to be a letter to that, but there's not a no switching. There's no switching in electric, okay, without consent. There's no switching in water from, from us to them. There is a no switching from them to us if they have a USDA loan and they all do. Understand that the federal government wants their loans paid, okay? So they don't want those stinking city coming in and stealing their customer. I mean, that's literally what, what it is and there's a 10th Circuit case. There's a bunch of litigation on that. So the last thing you do is ever try to take a customer without the consent of rural water. But it's only if they have a USDA loan and they all do. So that's how that works.
That being said, I mean, as I've talked about before, the infrastructure for water is just so expensive that it, I can say fairly confidently that it's not gonna make sense 99% of the time for them to come in and steal a customer. Because they'll, they'd never recoup that cost unless an entire development said, hey, yeah, we're, we're gonna switch. And the other thing to keep in mind is rural water is actually going up 75% over the next five years, so.
I think the other thing, when you, when we talk about industrial customers, we've got to remember, we're not raising this outside the realm. We're raising it to catch up with communities around us. So, so for them to move somewhere else, it's, it's, there's not a tremendous savings. There could actually be other expenses to get the water to them and or sewer, so I don't see ditch which and or Toro tomorrow going.
Right, but it's a fair question to ask and be talked, talked through.
No, it is. It's a good question, right? But yeah, that's it. And just, just based on those things that we've talked about, it's not a worry that I have.
Because I think that's a concern of a lot of people. So when you start talking about a 69% increase, they go, okay, well, it's about where it ought to be now and now you're gonna raise, it's not. It's not where it ought to be.
Correct, it's low.
We're trying to get it back into a more, more competitive pricing range and cover a lot of expenses here in town.
And there's a lot of other communities that are also looking at raising rates and things like that. It's not like we're going up and everyone else is coming down.
Right.
I got an email.
It wouldn't surprise me at all. I don't know that, but yeah.
Stillwater is on a 2% increase each year. It does not go to council anymore. It's an automatic.
Yeah, which is, I mean, that's what our ordinance tries to do with that inflation. I think we just really need to get used to that becoming a, it's an obvious. Like we don't do it in a situation again, but that's, that's a future, you know, question.
Another question that I had had from, from actually a number of the pastors is, you know, what, what are the churches? Are they commercial, are they industrial, are they residential? Then since they do a lot of, you know, the, the financial aid and they help a lot of, a lot of folks in Perry with utilities, you know, if they're, if the church's rates went up as well, they'd be able, they wouldn't be in a position to help as much. Where do they sit? Are they?
They're, they're commercial, they're on the commercial side.
They're on the commercial?
With these proposed rates, did you figure about how much it would raise the average home?
Yeah, yeah, we did. So this 35% about, what, it was $31, $34?
And before it was like 55 or something.
So the original proposal, well, it sounds like lots of percentages were around, but, so let's just go, water, as the, with the thirty-five percent, would increase about ten dollars and sixty-nine cents.
The average.
Yes, the average. Yes, sorry. And sewer would increase about seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
So about eighteen bucks.
Yes, a month. A month.
That's just residential?
Yes. I do a thorough calculator for commercial, because there's too much variability there, but.
Now, that being said, we did look at an admin fee of two dollars as well, right? So eighteen, nineteen, twenty bucks.
For the month, less than a dollar a day.
Do we have different tiers for commercial and industrial, like within that? Is there like a, you know, a bigger consumer of commercial versus?
With water and sewer right now, I think it's across the board. That's correct, we have it.
Is it across the board?
Well, well, I mean, right, right now, there's.
Right, for all, commercial?
Yeah, for, for water and sewer. Yeah, everybody pays the same.
Right.
We've created these new rates based on the, the, because of the new increases.
Right, right.
We're starting them at the same, and then you're putting in the percentages.
Yeah, it's broken out in really a very complex manner.
Really? Okay.
Yeah, it's, I mean, there's different base fees, there's different kilowatts per hour. During summer and winter, there's different kilowatts per hour, up to a thousand versus two thousand. I mean, it's, it's very complicated, but yeah, it's broken out.
And our industrial is only really three.
Ditch which.
Three, ditch which.
Easy drill.
And, yeah, ground zero. So those are our only industrial companies, everything else is commercial.
Yep. You know, the other option that I've brought up before, and we, we've talked about this, I've talked about this with a few numbers in, through the lens of looking at the jail tax, the jail sales tax, but we don't have to do it, you know, through that lens. Instead, we could implement our own sales tax, or, you know, a one percent sales tax. And if that, if we did that next year, that's about six hundred thousand dollars a year, we don't have to raise rates year two. So we could really propose it to the residents, say, hey, if you guys would rather do this as a sales tax, which I like that idea for a couple of reasons, one of which is, it's the same reason I like doing more on the commercial side versus the residential, because not everyone coming in to Perry to buy things is a Perry resident, right? And so that sales tax, a lot of it goes on the backs of non-peri residents. But then you could say, you know, we're gonna pass these rates as is, if you guys implement the sales tax, which has to be a vote of the people, then year two, we, we won't raise rates at all.
So a sales tax, a sales tax doesn't have to expire in order for you to implement a new one?
Correct.
Yeah, we can create a new sales tax.
Yep.
We've got one cent left.
No, there's, there's no limit. I've talked, I've talked to us, there's no limit.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah.
I mean, you all could have a thirty-five percent sales tax rate. I mean, but then who comes shopping in Perry, right? So that doesn't make sense. So it becomes the balance. But there's no limit.
Yeah, the state has a limit, right?
Yes.
The state does, but the municipality's city sales tax, we don't have a limit?
Correct.
No, you could, you could pass twenty cents of sales tax. I mean, but again.
But on the jail, that would have to expire for us to, no?
No.
Oh, okay.
We just talked about that as a potential, because it's, it's attractive, because then residents are losing one sales tax and gaining another.
It doesn't raise the overall sales tax if we do that.
That's why that option is attractive.
Because they might have a legal limit, but there's a common sense limit of what you can charge people sales tax and still get them to come to your grocery store or your restaurants, or.
But by doing that, that doesn't, that doesn't get our, that's just raising the sales tax, so it doesn't get our rate even with our cost, right?
That doesn't, that doesn't make up that inflation.
Yeah, so that's, that's correct, Scott. But by year three, we would be equal with the cost. Because we're about one point four in the hole. If we did year one, these rates, you're, you know, getting nine hundred and fifty thousand. By year three, you've, you've made up that one point.
You're still paying for part of it with penny sales tax.
You'd be paying for the capital projects and general fund, yeah.
But we haven't caught up with that inflation.
We're, we're done above just break even with these rate increases, so.
Correct, yes, that's correct.
So you're talking about renewing the sales tax that we already have, then not adding another one?
No, adding another one.
I don't think our community would vote for another sales tax.
Yeah, and that's why I like the idea of pitching it, hey, if you want to vote for another sales tax, I mean, given the option, if you want to vote for another sales tax, we won't, we won't raise rates year two.
I think we need to look at renewing the one we have, and they'll probably go for that, but, but people already complain that our sales tax is higher than anyone else. It's ten point five cents on the dollar. And it's still water, it's on something. And, and that's more than we pay God.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you. I'm just giving you options, that's all I'm here for.
Well, and I, I guess I'd rather, we were elected to work with the tools that we've got. I'd rather we fix our house with the tools that we've got. And then if we have an emergency or something else that comes up where we need to burn that penny sales tax, we go do it, but to, to cover what we haven't been covering with sewer and water doesn't feel right.
With the sales tax.
Right.
But we have been covered with electric rates.
Right.
Yeah.
We've been transferring over.
Right, right. But we have three, what we would hope would be revenue generating utilities, and we've got one.
Right.
Interesting.
And, and so think of the freedom that would give this city to go do things they need to do if all three of them were, were in the black. We could go do all the things. We could fix potholes, we could fix sewer, we could fix water. We just got to get there. And I think that's to decide how quickly we get there. But I would hate to
No instance.
Waste a lever that we may need for something else.
No instance, though, did he not get it in the black with any of his recommendations so far?
No, no, I agree. I'm, I'm just disagreeing that we try to go pay for part of it with the sales tax.
The sales tax would be above, above red black, right?
That's what you're saying.
Yeah.
So even, even skipping year two will eventually get us into the black with our sewer and water, without, without the sales tax going towards any of it.
Right.
Correct, yeah.
The other option would be going into year three and, and renewing a sales tax we already have, because I think it expires around that timeframe as well.
The streeting?
Water, somewhere, or is it twenty?
Twenty-six, I believe.
The jail one expires like this next year.
And so does the streets, yeah.
And the streets is two or?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, I believe.
Twenty-six.
Third bowl, twenty-six.
Okay.
Oh wait, streets is, streets is December thirty-first or twenty-sixth? No, jail's a one year before that.
Right. Yeah, the jail is the next one coming up.
We get all those dates coming.
I don't know the county dates, but I, I can get.
Well, ours, ours are what we're talking about.
Right.
The water.
Yeah, Bryce has already shouted a couple of times to affirm to.
That jail tax used to actually belong to the city.
That's correct.
And then when it rolled off, the county took a sales tax and took that. And now it's rolling off again, you know, whether.
Well, it's, it's already rolled off, they renewed it for non-jail purposes, they renewed it for public safety, so.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's correct, yeah. It used to belong to the city, they renewed it in twenty, I think it was twenty sixteen, and now it was off again next year.
Okay.
And there's, has to be by a vote of the people as well.
Yeah.
We have tried this penny sales tax. We won't raise your utility rates, and was soundly defeated by the, by the public. They, they, they didn't believe that we would do it. That's point number one.
That was actually a reduction of electric, and we didn't specify that we wouldn't raise it in that.
But that's fair enough. Right. Well, but, but we did, we did go with the, with the sales tax in lieu of rates. The second point is, is when you tier these and you provide that these rates will come into effect on these dates, don't think that councils don't go re-review those, those rates. I mean, I've seen councils set those dates up, and they don't, they don't all the time just naturally, you know, implement. I mean, somebody will raise it, that's coming up, I want to put that on the agenda. And there are many times when the councils say, we don't want to see that, that next rate, that next stage implemented. So you can always come up with a plan, of course, maybe a different council, but even existing councils have done that, seen the public reaction, and haven't done it. So the fact, my only point is, the fact that you do it, you know, makes it as permanent as the next regular meeting you have, and placing an item on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay?
I think I just worry that Gloria is correct, that, that this community's got sales tax exhaustion. And that making on a hail mary is not the best way to address this sewer and water problem.
Mm-hmm.
I agree.
I'd rather fix the, the root of the problem, get there.
Any other questions on this, you know, this proposal, what that would look like, or how that would affect residents, or how that would affect our ability to do projects?
These rates are slightly different than the ones that were provided in the attached ordinances. So i- if you like these rates as presented better, and, and you wanted to pass the ordinance, then you would pass ordinance F and, F and H with the insertion of the rates as provided at this meeting by Nate. And, and you could do that, because all that it is is a percent, percentage in the ordinance, so those could be changed. The, the agenda sets out what, what the, what the ordinances provide.
When I think about our original proposal, and, and where I feel like we, at least one of the areas that we went wrong, was that we didn't have that good plan out front that said, this is what we're going to go do with those, those dollars. And I don't know if there's a mechanism, we can get something in the minutes, or something that says, we're, we're going to raise these rates, and this percentage of it is going to be used every year to work on this, these problem pipes we've got. The rest of it's going to be used to try to get our, cover our costs for producing water and recycling sewage. And I know projects change over time and things come up, but I, I feel like if there was something in there that, even if it was just a short bullet list of our intentions, it, it would help. And again, that's just me talking.
It is, Bryce and I actually were discussing earlier today how helpful it is to go back in the minutes and look at the background, right? To get context. And so I, I don't disagree.
What I felt was several very informed people that, that talked to me afterwards, that talked about the fact that they understood that we're really talking about two completely separate issues. One is, is we've got these major potential asterisks that we've got to go address as far as maintenance to pipes. But we also aren't even covering our day-to-day expenses for producing water and refining sewage. And so, and so I think if we could come up with something that said, we're not going to go eat the whole elephant this first year, but we're going to still use a pretty big percentage of that to make sure we're fixing some of these disaster areas. And then by year three, we will have covered all of our expenses for, for day-to-day, plus we would have still put these, these things in for the projects. I'm just kind of making that up as I go, but I mean, something, some kind of along those lines that says, that's our plan for using.
That seems like what became the forefront on that was the issues that we had, and that really the forefront should have been is that we're not covering our day-to-day costs.
Right. A lot of people just felt like that we needed to go fix these disasters, and didn't realize that we weren't even covering our costs.
Yeah, because those day-to-day costs have eaten into the ability to do those projects, right? Because what has, what has lost out every year, grown smaller year, has been the capital projects, you know? And they told me this year, you have three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to cap a project. I was like, wait, what?
In the police department?
It's just, it was astounding, but that's, that's the only thing you can cut, you know, so that's what's been cut.
You know, the, the other soundbite that I liked from, from the meeting was, is someone mentioned the fact that are, are there a few, even small, proactive jobs that we can use our own water and sewer departments to go work on? I think it'd be great if we came up with a short list of things that they can go do. They, they do great work and keep us going. There's, there's problems. But, but I think it'd be neat for the citizens to see a short list of things that we're going to go out and, we're going to try to do some preventative maintenance.
Yeah, because as we've learned with streets, it's almost like a keeper to do in house, right?
One that's kept excited, because they know that we're, we're using some of the assets that we've got.
So on average, you said eight dollars roughly?
Twenty.
Twenty? So we did learn in the town hall that some people can't even afford the twenty dollars. And so are we going to look at the rules on the average billing and loosen some of that? I mean, I just worry about those that can't actually afford it, and that's, that's a huge impact. There's going to be a lot of people that can't.
Instead of waiting for a year's worth of billing, if they looked at.
Six months or something.
Yeah, six months or three months.
Change some of the rules a little bit.
So they don't have to wait a whole year to be able to even apply for that or something?
Or just if they're late once or twice.
What is the variability?
We usually do wait. I mean, we, a lot of them tries, if you're late once or twice, sometimes we can let that slide, but. I know, that's sometimes. I'm saying, like, can we change it to something more feasible, since we're going to make them pay more?
Yeah, we could look at it. I talked a little bit, I've talked a little bit to staff about this, that the only reason that it's currently, well, there's reasons it's currently the, you know, the twelve months. One is because to get an average, you really have to look at the, the whole pie, right? So all twelve months. And then the other reason was to make sure that they had parents on time, which I'm not as worried about.
Right.
But I don't. Which I understand they established, being established for a year, I'm saying, like, on time, and, you know, we'll let you do it this time, let's maybe loosen some of those rules a little bit.
Yeah, we're reducing the, you know, the penalty fee or something like that. Those are things that I, I've written down and like to look at, you know.
So that's assuming that that's like a new resident moving into a home, that you would need that average. Could they look at, you know, the previous residence's utilities and look at what that house?
Also based on the amount of people in the house, and who's going to run more water, but.
Could you kind of factor that in or something?
I don't know.
It's absolutely something that I could look deeper into.
So, so without taking a ton of time, could you move me through what they're talking about?
Average billing.
Average billing?
Yeah, average billing is something that residents can sign up for, so they're getting the same.
So someone on like a fixed income, you know, per se, they have a lot of, you know, elderly residents that, that live on a fixed income, if you're on a fixed income, and you knew that your, your billing was average, then every month, your utility bill is going to be this much. You can kind of plan ahead and be like, okay.
That's what we do.
Yeah.
But there's rules, you can't just be on it if you want to.
Right.
There's rules, like, if you can't be late, you have to have utilities for a year.
To get, to get to the.
To get on average billing.
So that helps out.
Currently, you can only apply once a year, three months.
October, November, and December.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it seems like there's some things that we could maybe relax there, and it's something I can look into.
Just to help.
Just another way to help the residents to cover it.
Right. Yeah, there's, I mean, there's definitely some things coming in that, when I look at, I'm like, this doesn't make sense, like, and I'm, I'm trying to be proactive and change the other things. And so I'll, I'll continue to do that.
Yeah.
One of those examples is, we've been looking at solar recently, and our expectation with that, and, you know, it was, it was up here when other cities are asking for this. So, you know, I'll have something before even the next couple of council meetings, but we're looking at lowering that, which is obviously not a widespread cost, but just an example of looking at a policy, saying, this doesn't make sense, and adjusting.
You're going back to the, the sales tax. At first, I was pretty excited about that, but now as I, I have the Oklahoma Tax Mission site pulled, and I'm looking at all the sales tax for all the cities in Oklahoma. If we went up by one percent, we'd be the second highest city in, in the state of Oklahoma for sales tax.
Is it one percent or is it one cent?
They just list percentages.
One cent is one percent.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, so that, that would make us the second highest.
Just picking on me now, Bryce.
You're not the numbers guy.
Yeah, no, I'm definitely not the numbers guy.
So if we wanted to do that, we would just want an existing sales tax, an additional.
Yeah, just, yeah, just re, I mean, when one of ours does come up, we can, we can redefine a sales tax to, you know, instead of being just streets, we can kind of make that a little bit more vague and say, capital projects. Cause then it can go to water projects, street projects to, you know, different, or general funds.
Release the restriction on it.
Right.
And I just keep thinking if we can get water and sewer back into black, it gives us the money that we were spending from electric to go do some of this stuff that we want to go do.
Right.
Without adding another penny to every restaurant and business in town. So. So Nate, if we were thinking or wanting to, to help people ease into that, to go with a 30%, to start with, a 30, 20, 20, what does that do to your, your goal of hitting a certain dollar amount by a certain?
You said a third 20, 20? So 20% for commercial, 20% for industrial?
No, no.
Thirty for one, two and three.
Year one, 20, year two and 20.
Thirty first year, 20 second year, 20.
Sorry, I'm making myself clear. No, I think you convinced me to leave the industrial whatever.
So that's what this would do to the number. It's, it puts it from. So it takes it from the 948 to the 97, which I can absolutely work with, you know?
But the same end result at the end of three years?
Yeah, yep.
Just a little bit smaller piece of the egg each time to.
Yeah.
Did you say 30, 20, 20 or you've got 15?
Thirty, so year three would be 20%.
Yeah, do you want to change that, see what that looks like?
There you go. So it still ended up with a 70% increase, 90 and 90, but do more year three rather than year one. Yeah, I'm totally open to that. It's, I could work with 897, absolutely. I would just lessen a little bit with those, you know, capital equipment upfront.
Thirty, 20 and 20 is 5% more than what's there. And you should go 30, 20 and 15.
But since it's compounded, remember, this, this is compounded. So your later increases have to take into account what you didn't pick up on that first year. Does that make sense?
Well, and I, I may be wrong, but my gut feel is that we're going to, over a three-year period, we're going to eat three years' worth of inflation. Inflation isn't going to go away.
We did, as long as we budget for it, it would go up by inflation because we have an element to do that.
We wouldn't have to do that for the first three years if we had enough in this.
Well, this is just to catch up for where we're behind now.
Well, it also sounds like we need to just do that each year by the ordinance, inflation aside from this.
By inflation.
In addition to, that's right.
Yeah, more and more cities, I mean, Chrissy mentioned still order that they just have that, you know, automatic. And that's what our ordinance attempts to kind of do is make that as automatic as possible because you just, you just can't get behind on inflation or you end up, you know, doing what we're doing now. So yeah, I think Sammy's right on that. You just look and say, hey, we need to do this to get caught back up. But yeah, you do inflation every year. And honestly, people have asked me, well, what if there was deflation in the history of the US? It doesn't really happen, you know? It's, I think it's happened a couple of times and I would, but I would be open to that. You know, it's like, you just, you have to keep up with whatever the, those prices are.
There's another great depression, we'll have other problems.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean philosophically, that, yeah, deflation, yeah, let's decrease it. You know, it's, you just have to keep up with what the market is doing.
This would not necessarily be part of an ordinance, but I, I do think that at the anniversary date of these increases, we need to offer the public a deep dive of what the, the previous year accomplished. Did we raise the money we thought we would? What did we use it on?
Yeah.
Because we're asking a lot.
Yeah.
And I think it would add to our communication and everything else that we're trying to do to make sure that we've done that deep dive. Maybe take half of one council meeting and just discuss our successes.
And the avenues that they have to get some help if they're struggling. List all of them, not just, oh, here, you can go be on average billing, you know?
You mean the organizations and stuff that are?
Yeah, everything, like churches and the hospital, we didn't know about that, or I didn't.
Yeah, I agree with you. I like what a lot of cities do with like our RAP tax, which is a recreation arts and parks tax. And they'll actually post like a sign at the entrance to the park that says, this park was paid for by RAP tax, right? To help people understand, well, when that RAP tax comes due, I should renew it because it paid for that awesome park down the street, right? And I think we could do, we could absolutely apply that principle to some of, some of these things.
What CPR right now?
Let's see.
And that's consumer pricing, dude.
2.1.
If, if it stayed there, I mean, we don't know what it will be half the year through, but.
Right.
With the 30, average would go 20 right now, be another couple of dollars or so in middle of the year, roughly.
On the average bill.
On the average.
I would, and it may just be me, but I would sure love to find a way to not hit the public twice during this first three years of rightsizing.
And we get back to mine.
But then we get behind again.
So you'd really kind of have to have like a year four almost.
Well, year four could do that.
That make up that.
I guess that's kind of what, why I was at, where I was at. I mean, if you figure a two and a half percent inflation for the next three years, let's build it into this.
Oh, so like instead of the 30%, it would be 32% or whatever.
Well, that's why I was 30, 20 and 20 instead of 30, 20 and 15.
Or do you mean?
I guess what I'm, we're going to, we're going to raise this three years in a row. I would love to be able to justify and show them the results of what each year did before I put an automatic two and a half percent on top of that mid-year.
The key is electric. Okay, I mean, if you didn't raise water or sewer, I mean, the effect is.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I don't want to say minimal.
Yeah, cause electric is.
I mean, electric is, is the money maker, so you know, that's where.
And today, there's not an automatic on electric.
Yes.
It's on all currently.
But, but, but you definitely exercised it in years.
We haven't actually executed it since we put it in place.
Yes.
I don't believe.
We are, we are allowed to, it's not automatic that it is in, right?
It's a tool we can use if we need to.
If we put the money in the budget, it would happen automatic. But council, like I said, the first year after it was in effect, I believe it was right around 12% or something with CPI and council didn't want to do it that.
We did two, we did one at two.
Just two or four, I think maybe it was that first year what ended up happening.
Yeah, I, granted, I don't disagree. It'd be great to be able to, you know, look and say, okay, well, if we did, you know, 33% here and did, you know, kind of guesstimated inflation, so we don't have to hit them twice, I think. And I think we could work that, you know, you could work it in and get close enough that it probably wouldn't, wouldn't break the system. But you'd have to do something on the electric side if we did that because that's not built into this, you know? Which you could make a, you know, a motion to do.
I think somebody else, I don't know where it came from, but somebody else said maybe a fourth year that would be like six or eight to cover what that inflation was, but we missed.
The inflation part is a variable, right?
Yep.
So trying to predict that on a three-year go-forward is shooting in the dark, right?
I think we should keep it separate from this.
To that, when you think about the purpose of what you are doing now with these large increases, it's not to keep up with the ongoing cost that this community has, is going forward. It's to.
Get your clothes.
Make up for it.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So to Sammy's point, keeping those separate as this is what we have to do to get ourselves back on track. And then this is what we need to do to keep ourselves moving forward.
Right.
And you know, I don't think it's too hard of a sell if somebody says, yeah, but you know what? We just got hit in July. It's like, well, do you want to go through a January again, you know? Because that's what's going to happen if you don't continue to do those Julies.
And hopefully within the next three years, it won't be that much. Hopefully.
I agree.
I was wrong with my numbers because that would include electric increase as well. It wouldn't just be, it'd be more, it'd be a dollar on water or so, but the bill would be overall more.
If we build it.
That's just the way it is. Just add up, that's the way it is, it should be every year.
Right, no other business even asks that question, you know? It's just, we do, we do inflation, you know?
We have to get the doors open.
Yep.
Depending on how things look, it's looking good, then maybe we say, okay, we'll pass on the electric this year. Cause electric seems to be.
Well, it's.
It's not the only pony that's pulling the wagon.
Right.
We can make those kind of decisions.
Right.
But if it's your lifeblood, you gotta continue to push that hard. And I, I think the exciting thing to me about electric, we, we've kind of worked ourselves into a spot now where we're not the highest priced electric city. And, and if we could leave that alone for a while, it helps us bring business in. It helps us encourage things. I guess that's why I'm so passionate about trying to get sewer and water back to where they're helping pull the wagon instead of pulling the rope the wrong direction.
So you mean, if we don't increase it, we may not be at the top of electric? Is that what you're saying?
If we didn't have to, it'd be great to.
Okay, cause we are one of the top points.
It really feels like we've worked ourselves into a good spot right now with electric. And if we don't, again, we can kind of stay in that sweet spot for a while.
Yeah, which that's, again, that's something you guys can look at and, you know, when July's coming up and say, oh yeah, we want to or we don't want to.
So do we want to do the 35 20 15? Like the, the proposal that he had up there?
He was 30, 20, 20, wasn't he?
That's a great idea. Originally it was 35, 20, 15.
Oh.
Right.
Correct.
For residential.
The residential.
Adjusting 30, 20, 20.
Commercial and industrial will 50, 20, 20.
Yeah.
I personally would like, my preference, I'd, I'd like to see what we're thinking and get the opportunity to talk to some of the people, especially that were here and, and kind of get some more feedback and see where that's at, but that's me.
Do we still have time before the January 1 date? We have another meeting that we could discuss this.
That would make me feel better too, I think, if I had a chance to circle back around and.
Knowing what it seemed like now, right?
Suggestion.
Right.
See how that, some of the people that have voice and opinions, see what their fuel factor, trust factor is there. And if we need to modify them a little bit to, to make it work, we've got another company to go do it.
Right, and with that, so council, everybody got Nate's spreadsheet, right? So you have access to that, you can use it. So again, so those that are watching this council meeting, you can reach out to any one of the city councillors, pretty much myself, you can reach out to Nate and come and ask to, to see that spreadsheet and to play around with it if you're really interested.
So is there, is there a clear picture that we want to see for next time? I mean, as we're here, we've got a lot of numbers bounced around, but we had a, a set proposal to come back with. I mean, is there something that we?
Personally, I like the 35 20 15.
Yeah.
A bigger chunk in front, just to get rolling on things.
That's on residential, right?
Residential, right.
And I get, is everybody, I guess, just a consensus for Nate to, to give us that back on?
Next meeting.
Well, now, I mean, I guess we could adjust it then as well, but at least something because we've gone through this a couple of times now. We don't have a, we don't have, it seemed like we don't have a clear direction where everybody wants to go. So 35 20 15 is something that we can verbally mention or have Nate to come back with us on, on the next meeting. That would give us one set thing that we want to look at. If we want to adjust it from there, we ought to be able to adjust it that night and make a decision. And now on the commercial side, what, what would everybody feel like on the commercial side that we would like to see is the, I don't know, I have 45, 25, 25, but I don't know if that's.
Yeah, right now this proposal reads 50, 20, 20 on the commercial and industrial. So close to what you have.
And I think it helped me tonight when, when you went to, you know, your financial goal for year one was somewhere around 900,000.
Yeah.
So if we play with it much, we've got to realize that we're taking from that.
Exactly, yeah.
Or adding to it, depending on which direction you go, but.
Right, and I like knowing that that is, that, that's an amount that you feel comfortable that we can, we can move forward with some projects and not have to wait for two, three years. It's not like we can start the projects after we've reached this amount, but it's something that we can start planning to move forward with.
Right, yep.
Well, it is better to have a solid proposal versus going back and forth on a spreadsheet. And I do create that, but I, to just open it up for people to mess around with. I'm not saying I don't want them to come to me, but that meeting, I mean, that might just be a mess, you know? Our next meeting, we need a solid proposal, not just a, mess around with numbers again and waste some more time.
Yep.
I think we need to just look at if there's any place that all of you cut costs. That's what people are telling me. Have you looked at what, where you can cut costs? Do we need 15 police officers? Do, this is the questions I get asked. And I try to explain, you know, that there's just a lot you don't see about the shifts and the different things that you have to fill. But people need to see that we're doing what we can to cut costs and seeing what we can and going forward, not to take on any projects that's going to put us in debt until this is, you know, put in place. I even looked at this and thought about what, 30, 10 and 10, and then take the 1% tax in the fifth year to make up the difference and then go forward. But I, I understand that there's a need and it's just a hard thing for all of us. And it's going to be a hard thing to come to an agreement with everything, but we're going to have to do something to go forward.
Right.
But.
With what's been proposed, I mean, not, not speaking as a mayor, but speaking as a business owner, you know, on my last, for the hotel, you know, I've got, we've got a pool, I've got a hot tub, I've got 63 rooms that are being used every day. Everybody's taking showers, baths, you know, we have a coffee shop in there now. Like I use a lot of water. My electric bill for the hotel would have gone by, up by like 130 bucks.
Your electric or your?
My water.
Water.
Yeah, and you know, as a business, yeah, I could, I can do that. You know, that 50% number sounds big and scary, but when I look at it on my bill, it's, it's really not too bad.
Well, and I think a gradual increase is better than what was presented the very first time anyway. It's just we got to come up with that, a firm proposal. Can we not do that now or do, or is it that we want to hear more from? Because I think this is what they asked for was. Are you shaking your head yes or?
I know. Hey, you're on the right track.
I think that too, it would be good to give people ideas and thoughts, maybe in the city bias of how to conserve water. How to conserve water Christian, remind them that there are things that they could come to the city for and get help to, to, you know, I think, you know, the program that you can get help that people come in and help you
Yeah, that's what she was talking about.
do whatever, but a lot of people.
Yeah.
So we need to get that out more often too.
We do advertise that quite often.
I know you do, and that's the reason I know about it. But I still think the more you can do it, the more people will begin to see it and understand. I've been to a woman house that doesn't even flush her bill every time she goes, you know? They always have to do that, you know, for that. And, and it's just sad. And I don't think they're saving that much water at all, but you know, that's just something we have to let and realize that. It's just a hurtful thing because of the people, like you said, the people that can't afford it.
Back, back on your spreadsheet Nate, on the, on the top, it's got percentages, year one, two and three up in the upper right-hand side. Those are cumulative numbers, right?
Correct.
So year one is nine percent and then year two is, what is that, four and a half percent?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Well, I, yeah, I know that, but
But it's just adding to
It's an increase, increase to the first year and then year three is, is a total of all three.
Correct, yeah.
So, so you know, there's only, year one, you're at nine, nine percent increase. Year two is, is fourteen, whatever that difference is, I'm not
Five percent.
computing.
Maybe five.
Five. So, so a five percent increase next year and another, and that's over the, that's the total.
That's your average bill, right?
Bill, right?
That's what you're feeling.
Yeah, that's total bill, yeah. So we talked about that being a fourteen percent increase.
Right.
And now it's, it's higher, splitting it out over time is our that's meant to show that, you know?
And so with, with the increases, if we decided to do, I think, do you have the thirty-five twenty fifteen on there and?
I've got thirty, thirty twenty twenty.
Okay, and then the commercial and industrial at the forty-five and sixty?
Fifty twenty twenty.
Fifty twenty twenty.
Well, yeah, I see you got that up there, but on, on the
On the original.
Your proposed
Yeah.
in the document on number that we haven't got yet.
Oh, you have industrial at sixty twenty-five twenty-five. On the agenda.
Right.
Oh, on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, I
That's a hundred and ten percent.
The goal was to make it, make those just a percentage so that you guys could amend that, because I had no idea what you would want.
Okay.
And so, yeah, when, when you go ahead and make that motion, which sounds like it won't be today, but might be next meeting, you'd just adjust those percentages to wherever you wanted. And you know, if we can come to kind of a general consensus tonight, like Dana was saying, I can, we can work those in and just adjust them as needed.
My, my other question is electric, how we, we were going to lower the residential and increase the industrial and then we decided not to change residential. If, why, why do we want to change industrial?
Yeah, the thought process there is because industrial right now is lower than residential. And so it'd be great to get industrial paying similar to what residential's paying.
So that's an extra hundred thousand dollars a year? Is that what that?
Yep, yep. And that also lets us put these percentages a little bit lower, right? So that they're not having to pay so much in the, in the water sewer, especially on the residential side.
So industrial will have that gap on here? The four percent, four point six percent increase on the electric?
Correct, yeah.
And then how much on their water? Fifty?
Uh, yeah, fifty percent year one.
So if this is tabled for the next meeting, does that give us enough time to talk through some of Sammy's suggestions about average billing, particularly around not able to get on except October, November, December?
Sure, yeah.
You can bring something back to it.
Two weeks, no problem.
Those ordinance are tied to this one, so correct?
No, that's a separate ordinance. It's got separate provisions and you can move those. It's really criteria for being a part of the program. And then it's criteria for being ejected from the program and you can just make those what you want.
It doesn't have to be forever. My thought was just to get through these increases and then people can get comfortable and start. I mean, it's not a forever thing. Like Bryce said earlier, we can change this tomorrow after we've understood what we want to do right now.
To that point, we have a provisional
Right.
part of the ordinance that would allow January through July.
And then revisit it or whatever, yeah.
Like that time or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, yeah. So those that have been on city utilities for this year, X amount of time, like starting January one, then get on average billing or something.
That'd be awesome. Then I could get on it. Yeah, I'll look into it and bring something.
So we can get something like that to kind of coincide with these changes that we make. I think that would be helpful for a lot of people.
I think the other, one other thing that has been discussed in the past and, and a little bit right now is the base rate for, for utilities, especially for maybe landlords or property owners that are working on their, working on their houses or, or businesses that utility bill that comes in, you know, a hundred and fifty or so a month and all you do is just have it turned on.
Right, break it. Current, you mean current, break it. Like nobody lives there?
Right, correct. It's just, it's just having the utilities on and available, those rates. I don't know if there's anything that can be, can be adjusted there to help with that, that expense for, for
like an incentive to help
renovate.
people remodel and renovate.
Yeah, it's something we can absolutely look at. Yeah, look at, see what happens.
I mean, I don't know if there's anything that can be adjusted there, but it
Me neither, but it's always worth checking, right?
Yeah, I mean, for somebody that's got one or two, it's not a big deal, but for somebody that might be working on ten, you know, a hundred bucks a pop is, is quite a bit.
That's a, yeah.
Okay, I'm just trying to read that side of the table over there and just I'm, I'm worried now that we're going to, we're going to come back two weeks later and we're going to just go ahead and approve what we would have approved tonight. And do we really need that two more weeks? Because I can't remember if it was Austin or Danette said that, you know, we, we've done what the people in the town hall have asked for. Do, do we really need to kick this down the road again? Because we could continue to muddy the water with other things. Do we need to go ahead and get the rate increase passed? And then continue to push for these other things at a later date?
Well, I do feel like there were people at that last town hall that were there in the first town hall expecting to hear what we're presented today. And they didn't get that opportunity to hear this. That's my perspective anyway.
They could be here right now. They could have come up and said something before. I mean, they knew what we were talking about. We have a couple right here that were here.
We had multiple phone calls. When was the rates going to be increased? They said it was far from this meeting, so.
We're always preaching about transparency. It's just another step in that direction. Even if we said come in, nobody shows up then.
Good point.
I have another question though. On the industrial electric on the spreadsheet, it has four point six, six-two percent in the description.
Yeah.
But in the column it says four point eight-five percent. And neither one of those is a hundred thousand dollars.
The four point eight-five does, but with the, what we have talked about is the four point six-two, which is actually ninety-five thousand three oh two.
Right. So
So it's five thousand dollars next that he was going to, he can figure five thousand dollars that he can take out of a capital project, so.
Yeah, I don't know how that number got mixed, but it's
Okay, so it's four point six-two, I mean, that's what the ordinance says on here as well. And that's the actual
That is what, that's the proposal.
If this didn't get passed tonight, we could bring back to you what you were talking about Randy, and that's what these projects would be. And then what the cost of financing would be. I mean, if you could have this thing up and kicked off before February of twenty twenty-five, which is when, you know, you had all the problems, I mean, could
Yeah.
If, if we knew this money was coming in, we could provide for financing, we could tell you whether there's a million dollar principal forgiveness opportunity, when that opportunity might be. And, you know, a lot of other information that could be presented at your December meeting. Or if not, if you rolled, it could be presented at a later meeting, but you know, as soon as you want to get to that, we're ready to, to, to bring that, bring, bring those numbers forward.
You know, we do have some of those that were in the last meetings. Danny, Mike, do you guys have any insight or?
So I would say this from just my perspective on it and some other people. You've done, so obviously the rate was a hard pill to swallow. And you've brought it down, I think, to a number, and this may not be popular with everybody out there today, but I'm just, it's going to have to happen. We understand that as the citizens that it has to happen, that we need to catch up. We've been behind and we've kicked this, like, like Randy said, kicking the can down the road. How I see it is, the people have already spoke in two ways. We have the town hall and then they've also elected you guys. And, and I know you're in a tough spot because you're just regular people like all of us. I mean, you work a full-time job, you're raising kids, you're running businesses. But we have entrusted you to make the decision. And I really feel like as a citizen, those percentages and a business owner, those percentages don't sound crazy and it gets you to the end game. And I would be more interested as a citizen for you guys to go ahead and make a decision because we've already elected you to do that. So go ahead and, and do what you need to do, maybe get this put to bed so people can quit worrying about it. And then maybe make it where it doesn't enact until after the holidays to, and then that would give some people a little bit of breathing room, a little comfort. But I don't think there's anything that's going to happen in two weeks from my point of view that's going to be different than tonight. That's just, that's just my two cents.
Mike?
Don't get stuck in analysis paralysis.
Yeah, yeah.
Something about, about the spreadsheet.
Right. I do, I do appreciate that. I, I kind of agree, you know, I feel like the longer that we prolong this, the more, the more fear and worry there's just going to be.
Well, it has, we know it has to happen and you put together a good plan, let's just get on with it.
Agreed.
Well, and like, like I said again, I mean, it can be changed.
Right.
Doesn't have to
We can pass this tonight and if it really doesn't feel right, we can put it back on the agenda, you know, on our next one. But ideally, we'd like this to happen January first. That's the date we're talking about. Or we're pretty much already there.
I can speak just from an administrative perspective. It's been something that's, it's felt like a huge weight in terms of being able to get other stuff down. It's like, yeah, once we get rates passed, once we get rates passed, you know, without knowing, it's, it's really hard to board with some of these other big things that we're facing. Two weeks isn't going to, you know, change my life, but and it'd be, if we feel comfortable doing it tonight, it would be a huge, a huge burden off staff, I know too.
There's kind of consensus how we feel about the thirty-five twenty fifteen and thirty twenty twenty.
Fifty twenty twenty.
Or no, it's sort of the residential. I think the commercial and industrial we feel fine with, but
The fifty twenty.
Oh, you're saying the two different options?
Right, yeah.
So we're talking about
I'm comfortable with either one.
Brady Barnley just texted me and said that he was curious if we, you could analyze it maybe every six months or so, just to make sure we're headed in the right direction.
Right. I think that's kind of what Randy was talking about with his projects and things, yeah.
And I couldn't imagine you couldn't.
Right, yeah. I mean, come budget time, we'll be looking at this again.
And that'll be in Nate.
And then if we do this, that you're kind of proposing, having these bigger rates going into effect in January, then we'll be looking at that in January and then come budget time, we're going to be looking at it again for, as we're putting the budget together.
Yeah, correct.
So this would set us up on that kind of six-month rotation, looking at these rates over the three years.
Well, actually true, I mean.
Right.
And this is divided up into multiple ordinances, correct?
Yes, yes, yeah. So I think we're just kind of stuck on that, that residential side. What numbers do we like? I, I feel like we're okay with the commercial and res, or industrial. The fifty twenty twenty.
Well, if we, you know, if we get into another situation like we did last year, the business will lose more in five days if not being able to operate than they would in any rate increase.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, five days of ditching, which means shit now
Yeah.
drastically detrimental to our year.
Yeah.
And it can't operate without water.
Right.
Yeah, industrial was supposed to be fifty twenty twenty and so was commercial.
Yeah.
He just put the numbers right there.
Any, any of those numbers that we've talked about still only covers five miles. We're still in that same position.
Right, yeah. You know, as far as residential, I'm okay with the thirty-five. And then I would like to look at, you know, do for the average billing for, for January to help those folks. To make that a little bit easier.
That's fantastic. I'll bring the recommendation back next, next meeting.
For the average billing?
Yeah.
Right.
I think I'll only say that just to make sure people don't think this happens January and we're not going to have it.
No, no, we don't last year, nor ever.
I mean
But we can all stand up and say, we, we're doing our part to make, to get us towards that.
Yeah.
That we can.
Yeah.
Yeah, Scott likes to eat an elephant one bite at a time and, and the past, like, we weren't even taking bites, this and these, you know?
We weren't even nibbling.
We're picking up the fork and knife.
We were getting trampled by that elephant.
So thirty-five thirty-five twenty fifteen?
If we, if we're going to follow the agenda, do we need to vote on B first?
Yeah, yeah. So we would start with with B and I think that's the rates that have been there. So let's start with, there we feel comfortable moving forward and going through each of those items?
I do.
Okay.
I would personally run away until the next meeting because I'd like to just hear people say, have anything to say about it, but I understand what Mike said. It's just a hard thing and, and I have an extremely bad headache tonight and I am not hearing very clearly. So I feel like I missed out on a lot of, of what's been sent to us. So it's like, I don't feel like I can even vote. I, I know we've got to do something.
Right. And even with these items, we would still have to go through and either table or
We have to table them all separately.
I would think so, because they're all
And if we bring it back next time, put the provision, the thing, you know, to, to reanalyze it in six months and see where we're, if we're headed in the right direction. I think that needs to be included in that because I think that's a really excellent idea that
Anyway, because that's the only budget.
We would have to do that anyway.
We would have to do it anyway because that's the only budget.
Well, I think what they're talking about is something in a council meeting where we, where we show the numbers of what increases are brand new, it's generated and
And that doesn't have to be voted on. We can just do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can put that on the agenda.
Well, to get us off high center, then I, I move that we table item ten B until our next meeting.
For the, okay, so
That's for the electric.
Yeah.
Unless I can just send all items under ten.
You can, you can see, see if that passes.
Okay. Well, then I, I move that we table all items under ten in the agenda until next Okay. Well, then I, I move that we table all items under ten in the agenda until next council meeting.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? All right, and then let's take roll call.
Coffee?
Yes.
Bloodso?
Yes.
Marshall?
No.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Or them?
Yes. All right, so we will have that on our next meeting. Hold on. All right. Item eleven. Received cannabis bids on CBE twenty-four dash zero zero six point oh one, Thirty Second Sewer Main Extension to Surer Corner Project. Consider awarding bid to the lowest responsible bidder of Patriot Construction Services Incorporated in the amount of three hundred forty-one thousand five hundred seven dollars. Authorize mayor to execute the public construction contract upon receipt bonds, insurance, and power of attorney by city attorney.
Co has looked into them. He says they're good.
Has he worked with them before?
I'm trying to remember if he had personally, or if he had someone who had. His exact words were, was, they're no, they're not lone hickory, but they're good.
So they're the lowest bid?
Yeah.
So lone, lone hickory was, well, it was the next lowest bid, but it was still eighty thousand more, yeah.
Well, it's above the, the estimated construction cost too, is, is that correct, or?
Oh, right. So the estimated construction cost was forty, was four hundred eleven thousand. So lone hickory was just above the estimated cost by ten thousand. So Patriot, he said that they're good, but they're not lone hickory?
Those is exactly, yeah. But he, he's, he recommended we move ahead with Patriot, you know, he said that they're good. It's a pretty simple project.
Can we say that? Do we got water lines next to other water lines?
New water lines running across the street.
Yeah, maybe I should knock on wood and say that.
Right.
It's like.
It, it concerns me that they were that much lower than the estimated construction cost.
Right. And then he, you know, he said that, you know, if he's saying they're good, but they're not
Lone hickory.
Lone hickory good. Lone hickory is only. Yeah, is the next, is the next lowest bidder, and they're just over the estimated construction cost by ten thousand. That seems marginal, not.
But less than the, we received a grant for five twenty, so, right?
Yes.
Yes.
But still a little, yeah, that's, still within your hand.
And I don't understand.
He won't be out any money?
I don't know how that works. If we say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna take this bid and go with a higher bid, and we want more of your grant money, I would imagine they would not be okay with that, but I really don't know. I'm just speaking if I were given the grant.
Co believes we'll be able to do more with, with the extra money saved. I asked him that question.
Oh, yeah, he's gonna, he's talking about extending it further into the property.
Extending it further, which would be wonderful, because right now it's just gonna be right, you know, right there, extending it further into the property.
That would be a separate project, though, right, that you have to go out for this?
It, it could be, because this is presented as a unit price, it'd be, it could be added to this. Because they take unit prices for, you know, there's a little sum, but there's also unit prices, so. Uh, he, he's not, he's not doing it yet because that would have to be permit. This is sewer line, it would have to be, you would have to get a, a, a permit through the O D Q uh, for that extension, so. But, you know, you can change order of contract at, you know, at any time. And it's not considered a change order if it's based on unit price. Uh, if it's based on unit price and you've got the money, you can just do it. But, but that's what he said. And, you know, in his letter, he said that this was a cost-effective, uh, item, but they meet all project specifications within the allocated budget. You know, he's our engineer, that's, you know, he's, he, he's telling us that, that, that Patriot's, uh, Patriot's okay. I do believe he has worked with them again, or he has worked with them before.
That was my first question.
I believe that he told me that.
Yeah, I don't know if it's under someone you knew personally, but. Yeah, I, I mean, if we don't pay for this, if using this grant to extend it further would be great, because, um, if we don't use this money to do it, we're gonna have to use other money to do it in the future now. At the end of the day, it's like, we're in a place where we're not putting those costs on developers. Generally, we're eating them. Um, and so.
It's really surprising to get these competitive rates, particularly in this environment, when no rates are, are, are this competitive. I mean, to see, to see a competitive rate or engineer's estimate is fantastic. We're not seeing that right now. I don't know that that means that this is a bad bid. You need to remember that this bid will have a performance bond, a maintenance bond, and a statutory bond on top of it. So if they don't do it, I've got this exact same amount of money as against that surety to ensure that it gets done. So there shouldn't be any worry about it. Of course, you know, if you have a great contractor, you don't even need a contract. Because a great contractor will do, will do the work and make sure you're happy. But, I mean, that's why we contract, get performance bonds, maintenance bonds, statutory bonds. You have an amount of money through that, through that, uh, performance bond with a, with a major insurance company that guarantees if this guy doesn't get it done, they will put that same amount of money up uh, to, to get it done.
And then on top of that, I don't know, I understand it's, when you see it and it's under the engineer's cost, it kind of makes you blink, but, I mean, project costs vary, you know, look at Sympopa Digging compared to Patriot Construction. Project costs vary.
I think the comment is the worry. The comment they're not lone hickory is the worry.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it doesn't make you feel confident on approving a four hundred thousand dollar project when you say that.
Well, I think some of it was just the contractor. Project was pretty fun. They were really easy to work with.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I trust Co. He's said before, I wouldn't have awarded it to, you know, that person anyways. Um, and so he, he's straightforward with us. If he didn't think they could do it, he wouldn't have recommended it.
I can get him on the phone. You wanna hear from him? I mean, he may have some answers. I mean, unless then somebody says no, I'm gonna call.
He texted me earlier to.
Probably got Co in trouble if Patriot's gonna come for him.
I was gonna say, open meeting.
Co, we're here at the council meeting, and we're talking about your award to, uh, to Patriot.
Patriot Construction, yes.
Yeah, so, uh, have you worked with them before?
Newer's Hogs.
Okay, so why don't you talk about them?
You're on speaker, Matt.
Yeah, you're on speaker, council.
Just so you know.
Yeah.
Um, I've had very good experience with Patriot Construction. They've, they've always done excellent work and, uh, been easy to work with when you need to deviate, uh, due to some kind of unforeseen physical condition, so.
And Matt, what, what's your thought about, you know, if we have extra money in this grant? What, what are your thoughts about what we're gonna do?
Uh, I think if we have extra money on the grant, like what we do is we do a bore to extend to the west side of Thirty Second Street, so we can accommodate future growth, uh, growth on the west side of the road without having to do a bore in the future. I've already upsized to a ten-inch line as well, too, from eight-inch, because the project was so with, well within budget. So, and we can extend maybe some additional sewer line to, uh, make sure we utilize the full amount of grant funds available to us.
Anyone have any other questions?
So that was out west or further south?
Uh, further south.
He said west of Thirty.
Yeah. For, for future growth, yeah.
Oh, oh, you mean, you mean once you get south to the property to go west. Is that what you mean, Matt?
Well, if, if you're going north on Thirty Second Street, uh, our sewer main is on the east side of the road, well, there's a lot of property that could develop on the west side. So I think we would bore over underneath on the west side, so we could put in a manhole on the west side of the road. And then if somebody wants to develop there closer to the highway on the, to the south, we don't have to do a sewer crossing in the future, and we can easily serve the west side of the road too, without having to add a bore in the future.
So cross, cross Thirty Second?
Contingency in the budget. So that would be one item we could utilize to burn up some contingency. As far as extending the sewer line farther south on property, um, it's difficult to say how it will develop at this point. So I'm not sure how far we would want to extend it south onto the property without having some kind of preliminary conceptual plane on the future development of that property.
Streets are gonna be anywhere, yeah.
But, but it sounds like accepting this low bid gives us lots of options.
Uh, and we, we make that manhole where we cross the highway, uh, very deep, which provides us a lot of flexibility to extend a sewer main to the south to try and reduce the likelihood that we would need a lift station towards some of the southern portion of the property. Now there, towards the very far, far south, that's just, it's, it's a large hill. But if we lay a deep main hill, we can serve most of the property through gravity flow.
Thank you.
Yeah, I feel better about it. Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Yep, mm, bye-bye.
I'm gonna accept the low bid from Patriot Construction Services.
Second.
Okay. Any other to send? Okay, let's have a roll call.
Coffee?
Yes.
Bloodso?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Or them?
Yes. All right, item twelve, approval of service agreement with local government testing consortium for the city substance abuse testing program. So it's just like.
Just renew on the contract.
I have my question. We approve the service agreement with local government.
Second.
Okay. Any other questions? Let's have a roll call.
Coffee?
Yes.
Bloodso?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Or them?
Yes.
Now, council members have to be part of that testing.
Are you gonna fail?
I'm, I'm worried about some of the people, not myself.
I was like, put you on the list.
Yeah, it's okay.
Do the test for chocolate?
All right, item thirteen, any new business? Nope. Item fourteen, adjourned?
Somebody.
All right.
And coffee?
Yes.
Bloodso?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams? Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Or them?
Yes.
Here.
All right, let's call our meeting in order for the Perry Municipal Authority and start with roll call.
Here.
Bloodso? Marshall?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Cold Iron?
Here, here.
Rupp?
Here.
Williams?
Brown? Yes.
Here. All right, we've got quorum. Let's have consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yes.
Coffee, yes. Bloodso?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Or them?
Yes. All right, does anybody have anything to say? Nope. All right, new business? We have to adjourn.
So moved, second. And coffee. Bloodso?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Or them?
Yes.
Here.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, let's call our meeting in order for the Perry Facilities Authority with roll call.
And coffee?
Here.
Bloodso?
Here.
Marshall?
Here.
Davis?
Present.
Cold, the pumpkin?
Here.
Rupp?
Here.
Williams? Brown? Or them?
Here. All right, we've got quorum. Item one, consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
And coffee?
Yes.
Bloodso?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Hi.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
All right, comments from those assembled? Nope. Any new business? Nope. Would you like to adjourn?
Yes.
And coffee?
Yes.
Bloodso?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Or them?
Yep.